Welcome to the regular city council meeting of Tuesday, April first, two thousand and twenty-five. I hope you got to enjoy the April Fool's Day and had to play a joke on somebody. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sarah, would you please do the roll call?
Morris?
Here.
Weir?
Yes.
Smack?
Here.
Clements?
Here.
Dewar?
Number four is a motion to approve the April first, two thousand and twenty-five agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number five, public comment. Anyone that would like to speak in regards to the agenda or items not on the agenda, please come up to the podium. Okay. Number six, approval of the consent agenda. I'll take a motion to approve, please.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number seven is approval of the resolution calendar. I'll take a motion to approve, please.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Morris?
Yes.
Weir?
Yes.
Smack?
Yes.
Clements?
Yes.
Dewar?
Yes.
Number eight, request to purchase the camera system with Mainstay Systems of Iowa, the amount of thirty-three thousand, four hundred and seventy-three dollars for the community response center. Justin, you want to speak to that at all, or?
Other than I can certainly fill in any quick gaps of my opinion, just since I was absent at the last meeting. One, of course, it was more than I was ever hoping, but we also knew we were going to need new cabling and a bunch of others, and that was a lot of an unknown. Mayor had the budget pretty close, though. She did state that she had thirty thousand budgeted in. I was hoping we could do it for less, but alas. Really, the cameras overall, I worked with Ben Newman, Sergeant Newman, on the PD side to kind of review cameras. We did take a look at placement, just to make sure that we weren't overdoing it or putting extra cameras in where they really weren't needed, and then also making sure that it took care of some additional requirements for that building, as it is a secure facility. Law enforcement does bring certain subjects of investigations and things in there. It does add a couple of spots that we kind of retrofitted in the past to have some coverage, especially more out in the bays, really just to kind of watch over some of that. For example, they've had maybe an investigation on a vehicle or even some potential stolen goods. Well, we don't want them outside, and we don't want it sitting in an office area, so the wash bay has been a great place. Putting a camera there obviously then helps the chain of custody and so on and things I'm definitely not the expert in, but have definitely seen the signs, "Do not touch, stay away," so we leave it alone. But it has a camera on it, so we know that, you know. The other thing is, is something that, you know, are in consumer-grade cameras now, but all the additional license plate recognition, face recognition, things that I'm not trying to necessarily get in, deep state, we're searching you, but again, that is a secure facility, and hopefully you're there for the proper purposes. And if we've had issues coming through the parking lots, if there was damage done, or if there are problems or anything, that's just additional tools that can all be utilized now. I do agree with keeping it local, so there was the two options to do like a cloud subscription where all your recordings would be at versus just having it local. We have the setup already there. I don't think we need the additional cost, was my opinion, to just buy the equipment and house it locally. That's what's there now as well. But otherwise, yeah, the camera placements and setups kind of helped fill in a couple holes, and then we were able to kind of reduce a couple others. So all in all, what I'm saying is I was good with any of the three bids, short of the cloud options, and Mainstay was the lowest.
And Mainstay is already a vendor, right?
Yes, Mainstay is actually who the police department does their IT services with, which would seem to be a good fit.
Yeah, I've had, was just an initial introduction and stuff to them, just by coincidences I was passing through, and I mean, there were no red flags right away for me. Sounds like they highly specialize in police department kind of systems and how they interface through the state. So they seem more than competent.
We were only able to reach out to one of the ref, or we reached out to all the references that we were received, but only able to talk to one, but it was a, it was a good reference. And it was a county, so they deal with counties and police departments, so.
So you were actually able to verify that?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the system does need updating, and I mean, that's just, there's no way around to try to patch together the old ones. We've had a camera to the rear of the building physically not there for a few years now. So it's just, you can see it as you drive by, the wires are just dangling because the camera's just shorted out. We've had a couple instances with even just our public events that we've held down there that that camera would have been nice to have. We may do without it, but it would have been really nice and answered a lot of questions for us if it had been there, so.
Any other questions, council?
I make a motion to approve that request.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number nine is request from fire chief to order two thousand and twenty-six ambulances with Lifeline emergency vehicles in the amount of three hundred and ninety-one thousand, three hundred and ninety-four dollars. Of course, this is a long-term project. We've been setting money aside for it for a couple of years now, and it's going to be two years out before we actually have to pay for the vehicle, but we have to get it on order. Anyone have any questions regarding that?
Does this figure include any possible delivery or freight-type kind of charge to get the vehicle, or?
They're local. I mean, we'd probably go pick it up.
Okay.
They're in Sumner.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, I went on the tour, but I don't know.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
I was just asking if there's any other kind of like miscellaneous fees that sometimes come in at the tail end, is like if we approve this dollar amount.
This is it, yeah.
Incendials.
The only additional, let me rephrase that. The only additional cost I talked to Chief Phillips about is the lettering, and he's actually doing that project himself. So that's going to be, he said materials shouldn't be over five hundred dollars.
So that three ninety-one figure is all-encompassing and not subject to change, correct?
That is correct.
So a group of council members went over to Sumner?
Yeah, yep.
I'm familiar with that plant.
I was very impressed.
Yeah, we were.
They've got a great operation.
Yes, they do.
I could spend all day there. It wasn't that interesting. Until the hailstorm. Remember they moved all the trucks?
Oh, yeah. We had a huge storm when we were there, so they were like all panicking because they had, you know, vehicles outside that were ready to deliver.
We had all the brand-new chassis inside so the hail wouldn't hit.
Yeah.
And you said that was a year out?
Two.
Two.
Two years.
Two and a half to three.
So they don't give us an end date? They just say two and a half, three years, and you'll hear from us?
Yes.
Okay. I did have an opportunity.
Which gives us time.
When we were spec-ing out the ambulance and things, I, obviously, disclosure for those that don't know, I'm also a member of the fire department, but I did sit in from the council side when we did bring in the Lifeline vendor, when we really kind of got the initial specs. So obviously, having knowledge, I did assist with the last ambulance spec, so was familiar with it, but more just kind of listened and learned then to kind of apply that now. I will give, you know, Chief Phillips and Assistant Chief Rodden and the others that were involved, there are EMS captain, Rob Gipper, a lot of credit. So it was one of those things that the wants versus the needs, yeah, four hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money. They did a great job really not overspec-ing anything, putting the things in that we need to use to keep the vehicle a long time. There were a couple area upgrades that were very much, I think, well worth the additional cost. The cot being the big one, so for anybody that sees the quote, that cot there is a large chunk of one of those line items. The big thing I brought up, even talking with the mayor, is the whole thing of can you still operate the old-school, bend-downs, manually pick-it-up cots and things? Yeah, the reason you don't see them around is the wear and tear on your personnel. So now it gets back into a work comp issue and stuff. These new cots literally unload and load themselves, so all of the weight of holding and picking and moving it in yourself is done. It's eliminated that risk. So is it a forty thousand dollar worth risk to maintain people's health and work comp issues and everything else? Yeah, I think so. So, but otherwise, the other setups, very similar to what we have, so they really didn't go overboard by any means, in my opinion. They did a great job.
Thank you.
What kind of down payment are they requiring?
No down payment required.
But lots of proof this way.
I'll take that as a motion, Deck.
I do make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I guess these are in such demand that if we decided we didn't want it, there's plenty of people that would move up on the list, so.
Yeah, that's a good way to look at it.
We'll be taking it. The nice thing was is that zero down and then the price lock. That was the big couple of things we were asking, is like, well, costs are just going to keep going up in two years, and that was their big thing to our understanding, is nope, that's your invoice price, that's it. So.
Yeah. Number ten, request from fire chief to order turnout gear from Hyman Fire Equipment in the amount of five thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight dollars.
Is this just a routine replacement? Yeah. Okay. Fired ten years, so.
I guess I'm just going to repeat the question. Is there shipping to be added to this?
This is all inclusive.
Because one of the quotes it said does not include shipping, so I don't know if it was this quote or the other one that was in there. So we could approve it plus shipping, because it is what it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, it does say on here.
Do you remember, Ryan?
Estimate tax and shipping.
What does it say?
It had nothing in the line.
That's for a different quote.
So I don't know if it was free shipping, basically.
Yeah, it's a blank line item.
What does it say, Adam?
Otherwise, I'll make a motion that we approve the request plus shipping if needed.
So the quote, and I pulled them up just to make sure I'm speaking correctly, the quote from Veridian, which is a different brand than this one, does state, does not, subtotal does not include shipping or tax.
Right.
That is a different quote than the one we are looking at.
But the one we're looking at on the line item that says shipping has nothing in there.
It's blank.
So I don't know if they add that once they know what it's going to be, or if it's always free. That was my question. I just want to make the motion be enough.
Yeah, no, that's a good idea.
I think it's zero, so I'm good there. They wanted it, and they should have put it in there.
But a lot of people don't have freight till it's delivered. I will make the motion to approve the request of five thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight plus shipping if there is an added charge.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number eleven, request to order RAS pump for the wastewater treatment plant and flight pumps for both the East End and Lafayette Love Stations in the amount of eighty-three thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars, including shipping, with electric pump as budgeted for FY twenty-six.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Number twelve, request to install new baseboard at the community response center in the amount of fifteen hundreds with Google construction. As most of you know, I'm sure all of you do, we just wanted them to look at the flooring one more time before we put the baseboard down, and it is what it is. It's the original construction. This is what we get, so. I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thirteen is request to consider assisting the Evansdale Economic Development Corp. with grant opportunities for the community center and future city management. There's several people here tonight with Evansdale Economic Development Corporation. Just to kind of give you an idea, the most difficult thing when trying to get grants is, you know, they look at an organization, it's not like a city that continues through eternity. It's, you know, if the group folded or what have you, there's a lot of opportunity out there, and I think a lot of people would be responsive to having a community center. I think they've been working on it since two thousand and five, and they can give you more information if you have questions. But talking to some of the people that actually do grants in our community, you know, they said it would be better if, you know, for funding purposes, if the city were to take it on at one point. You know, it doesn't mean immediately or what have you. It could be, you know, once it's paid for or whatever, and then we basically just have cost of maintenance. But those are all things, you know, for council to consider. Did you want somebody to get up and speak regarding it, or?
We certainly can. For the sake of clarity, I will describe myself as being a member of the EEDC. I am, in fact, the chairman.
Can you talk into your microphone, please?
Yes, please.
Because they can't hear you.
I am the chairman of the board of the EEDC, so just to preface that, I will be abstaining, abstaining on any vote tonight. But if all the members of the board would just stand, we have Steve Kowan, we have Leroy and Luanne Ketter, we have Kristy Reisdum and Mary Ketwig here tonight. So if, and thank you. What we're looking for is to explore the possibility of being a partner with the city. We would like to still build the center and down the road when it is paid for, unless we got enough grants to pay for everything right from the scratch. That would be wonderful and turn it over to the city on day one. But we are not looking to turn it over to the city as long as there's a mortgage on it. So we are looking for partnering so that we can obtain, or at least have a better standing to apply for a lot of grants. And that's what we're asking tonight. I think there are a lot of avenues that a community center would benefit the city itself, such as having an evacuation site for temporary shelter in times of emergency, such as power failures, whether in the winter or the summer. Sometimes power is going to be out for a day or two, and some people have no friends or relatives easily here that they can go stay with. So sometimes cities are looked at for having evacuation sites. Granted, we do have the CDC, but that would not hold a whole lot of cots if it was a major outage. Sometimes in the summer lately, cities have been looked to to have cooling sites. So in extreme times of a hundred-degree weather and especially elderly who may not have air conditioning, and would look to something like that for temporary shelter that is air-conditioned. So we would have generator capacity. One thing that I thought of might be a nice idea is to have a unified voting site where all of our wards could go to one place to vote in their respective corners of the room, just like the CRC has two wards voting there now. A larger room could accommodate all four wards, and then that way, you don't have people sometimes wondering, where do I go to vote? Especially years where the boundaries have changed, and you used to be in this ward, but now you're in this ward, and you forgot it or didn't know it. Now you sometimes have to drive to a different site, whereas in that situation, you just walk to a different corner of the room to a different table. Also, half the town has to remember that school board elections are at a different site from where general elections are, because all school board, all wards vote for school board at the CRC. But Ward one is up here, Ward three is at Prince of Peace Lutheran Church. So it would eliminate that confusion. And then also would provide the city a large space if they ever wanted to have a large meeting for and encourage large city attendance, such as, you know, election debates. I can remember in years past, sometimes we have had debates between candidates. The one I'm remembering was held at Bunker in the gymnasium many years ago. It would be a good place to hold town hall meetings. It would be a good place if you had a project going and you wanted to attract a large portion of your population to come, such as the Lafayette Road Project or the sewer plant renovation. I think a lot of times, if we have those kinds of meetings here, I think a lot of people just stay home because they know it's a small, crowded space, and they don't want to risk having to stand during the meeting in standing room only, crowded shoulder to shoulder. So it's more conducive to encouraging our citizens to come out and get that information instead of, you know, staying home and then they say, well, I don't know about it, which is very understandable. Granted, those opportunities don't come up every month or even maybe every year, but when you need them, I know Prince of Peace Church has been asked on occasion if a meeting such as that could be held in our fellowship hall. So it just would be a nice thing to have.
So just a clarification, it's capacity of, standing capacity of fifty?
No, that's just the chapel portion. That's one room. The main open room where you would have like a wedding reception or some kind of a big thing like that. Is two hundred and thirty, I believe, seated capacity. But at this point, we're just asking the city to explore becoming a partner with us to get this accomplished, because it's been going on, and we are constantly having fundraisers, but when you're only profiting a few thousand dollars at a time, to get to one point two million is going to take a very long time.
When was the last time you had actually went out for bid for it?
Probably four years ago, maybe, I'm guessing, right off the top of my head. So yes, that one point two is an old figure, but. Old as in not last week.
Well, it's a pretty admirable group. I mean, they've done just a tremendous amount of work.
And I have talked with some citizens who think that the city should bond for this project and take it all on right now. And I personally am hoping for some compromise in the middle.
Yeah, I don't imagine there's a lot of people that think.
Not a lot, but there are some vocal people.
There is at least one.
So.
So what, do you have any specifics, Sandy, on what you're looking, you know, when you say to partner with the city? And Mayor, I threw a bunch of different theoreticals around, but what specifically is the EEDC?
When Dan and I were talking, probably first, we would want her to explore things with the attorney to see what a partnership could look like between a nonprofit and a city. You know, the sportsplex in Waterloo was built pretty much this way, to my understanding. It was built by private individuals as a group, and then at some point turned over to the city. So it is not a unique idea. It happens, but we don't actually have those answers as to how it could work. So it would be at least paying the attorney to explore that and give us some feedback.
But just to kind of give a scenario, and not saying this is the only scenario, but the one, and how you just mentioned what the sportsplex was, the capital expenditure of the facility to get it up and running and established is what we're, what the EEDC is looking to fundraise and get accomplished.
Correct.
It then turns into an operational expenditure to keep it running, and that's really what the city would have to potentially look at so that your grant opportunities and things, no matter if that's the way it goes or not, all, every grant writers and people look at that to make sure that it isn't something, the EEDC doesn't exist, and all of a sudden we have a building that nobody will support, and their money is basically wasted as far as on the project.
We would not be looking to turn it over to the city until the building was paid for, and if there were any leftover funds or monies from grants for furnishings and that kind of thing, that would be turned over to the city, too. It's not a profit maker for any of us on the board. We don't earn any kind of salary for being on the board. We don't take any kind of financial benefit at all.
Would the city have any input as to what kind of building went up?
No, I don't believe so. We certainly would think, look at your ideas. We've got a plan already. We've paid for that already.
So this is what the final, this is what it would look like?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
The city would be getting a completely paid-for new building for their community center, and I believe probably a good share of the cities in Blackhawk County have community centers of one kind or another.
Yeah, it's been absolutely a topic that I hear just in passing or social media, something of just, you know, to have it. As I was talking with, and it isn't even just for our community. Ironically enough, the mayor and I were talking about this as well, how if the city were to take over the operational piece, you would rent it out, you know, there'd be a fee, or how would we do, just even some of the, the down-in-the-trenches nitty-gritty details, what all would that look like for potential COSSEC? And we even brought up the parks and Angels Park. And when I was down in the park for an event a couple of years ago, I talked to a handful of people that were all there as they were just passing by. Not a single one of them was from Evansdale. Not a one. That was just a great place for people to come into town and to meet up, and one was having a family reunion there.
We really expect the surrounding area to also want to hold their functions there, their wedding receptions, their showers. I mean, as far as, our thoughts have gone as far away as like Gilbertville, Dunkerton, Waterloo, the whole surrounding area of Blackhawk County.
Do you look at this to be self-sustaining?
We certainly do, more so.
So not a burden on the city, ideally? Providing a service?
And like Sandy said earlier, we're just looking, just, you know, we're just seeking approval to see what that looks like. You know, how would a city work with, you know, we would have to get our city attorney involved. How would, how does a city work with a nonprofit? You know, what does that look like, you know? And then what grants out there are available? Because I did some, you know, just research lightheartedly. There's a lot of grants out there.
Yeah.
It's amazing, you know, some of them are only ten thousand dollars, but some are two hundred thousand dollars. So there was a lot of grants out there. It's kind of having that support like a silent partner. Until it's paid off.
Is there, is there a request for financial assistance? Is that part of this?
This is just.
From the board?
Yeah.
No.
No, they just.
No, it's just looking at.
To know if we will look into this in the hopes of partnering.
Yeah. But I'm just looking down the road, if there will be a financial request. You don't ever see that on the.
It'll just take longer to get it built. If, you know, we anticipate by having a partnership with the city, we would have access to more funding possibilities, therefore decreasing the amount of money we would need to borrow to build it. But at some point, it's going to get built, whether we have grant money to cover it all or some type of a mortgage, small to medium. It's, we've been at it too long to give up now. It's just a matter of how much more time will it take? And this way, we can get it accomplished sooner.
So if you had a mortgage, would you have to wait until that mortgage was paid off before you hand it over to the? So, if you had a mortgage, would you have to wait until that mortgage was paid off before you hand it over to the city?
Yeah, she said that, yeah.
That could be a while.
You know, unless the city wants to take the mortgage. We, we would not turn that down, I'm sure.
No problem with that, huh?
We're very flexible.
And that's what I was afraid was coming.
But no, I will state for the record.
Yeah, good.
If, if you decide to continue with this first step of at least looking to see how a partnership would work, um, I will, I will say on the record, we do not intend to turn this over to the city until it is paid for.
So, Mayor, would this be in the form of a resolution that we support this request, or just a verbal approval at this time?
It's just verbal, because we have to see what that would look like before. There's no time. We're not doing anything but conversing with our attorney. You know, have people done this in the past, you know, in order to seek grants?
Yeah, and then at that point, we might do a resolution?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. If we were to do anything formal, it'd be probably by resolution. We'd maybe even go as far as to have a public hearing. And get the public's response.
The biggest thing this is needed for, eh, eh, just to reiterate, and if, if I missed it, sorry, if I'm re- saying something again, but, um, how the mayor explained is she'd even found other opportunities from other similar organizations that had put in for grants to do just this, and they were actually completely denied because they did not have basically that safety net of the larger, longer term, more financially feasible organization behind them. In this case, the city. So, and it's, they're more worried about once it's built, and okay, it runs for a year. Now the organization funds dry up, because they were a nonprofit and they don't get funding anymore. What happens to basically that business's investment, or, or, you know, that grant's investment? They wanna make sure it's going somewhere to be sustainable, and that's how I understood it, is that the biggest potential risk, uh, and I don't use risk in a negative, but just what financial risk does the city have, would be the operational costs after the facility's already in, in, in service and production. So, that's what I took away, and again, we don't know what those costs look like yet. So, that's where, that we would kinda have to start exploring that, which I personally am open to. I, I, you know, fact finding doesn't cost us really anything. So, um, if it's something that we could potentially bring to our citizens for little to no cost, um, eh, I, I, much smaller project, but in a very similar fashion, the dog park was something that was a joint venture that cost the, the Evansdale taxpayers, in my opinion, little dollars. Um, it did cost some, but it was chiefly afforded, and then now the operational costs are basically on the city of Evansdale. But, the trade-off for, I think, the people that use it, and it's a nice addition, I personally felt that it was a good ad. So, kinda look at this in the same way. Now, is it a ten thousand dollar a month ad? Maybe not, but that's what we have to find out, so.
Yeah, no, I agree.
So, would the same concept have been with Angels Park? Would that be a good comparison to draw to? The organization put it in place and then turned it over to the city to maintain?
Yeah, very similar, very similar.
And the organization's still doing a lot down there, so.
Sure do.
Just hats off to them. Taking care of our parks is nice.
They have a, which you're aware, quite aware, Donnie, that they have a lot of volunteers like yourself, that are maintaining the flowers and stuff down there.
I guess I'm fine with at least pursuing just to see what it is look like. Um, I don't think there's any harm in doing that, cause, I mean, from the city's side, we have, we have no skin in the game yet. We can just ask some questions and see where it goes.
Yeah. No good reason not to?
Mm-hmm.
I'll take a motion to do so, then.
I would make that motion to consider, or I guess pursue more fact finding, to kinda see what this looks like.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I abstain.
Thank you, Sandy. A new journey. We'll just look and see. Fourteen requests to excavate and stabilize Lafayette ditch across from the OP with JQ, JQ Construction in the amount of nine thousand. Um, Chris is here. He'd be happy to explain, um, what we've been through with this area of the city and, if you have questions.
Come on down.
Yeah, sorry, Chris.
Not like putting you on the spot?
Fill me in, quite apparently literal to the quote.
Uh, so, funny you say that. For years, I've wanted to fill that in, so we could mow it right up to, like, basically Brushkern's property line, around some of those bigger trees, leave them, but then we could get equipment in there to get some of those dead trees that are. But, uh, Doug attended a meeting, or our previous mayor attended a meeting, and, uh, he said, cause it's wetlands, we could not fill it in. But we could maintain it the way it was. While the north side is where ninety percent of the problem is, and we can't reach it with any of our equipment. We have a, you know, tire tractor backhoe, can't get down in that ditch there to really clean it up, and it's just kind of a catch-all for trash, and, and then when we had our water main break, almost a year ago to date, two years ago to date, um, it kinda filled, some of that silt is filled in there. So, we have two inlets and one outlet there. So, just kinda reshape all that up. And then, when the curbing gutter comes through there, you know, they're gonna do some beautifying on the south side probably. But my main concern is the north side, where all those dead trees are. They're leaning against that communications line. And we just can't get in there to get anything.
And does this clean that up so that you will have access?
Yep, and then we're gonna try to maintain it. They're gonna try to shape it better to where we can try to maintain it. Yeah, cause I won't even let my seasonal guys try to mow with a zero turn, cause I don't want anybody to get hurt, you know, so.
The small little spot that it is.
Yeah. Even weed-eating is kinda dangerous, and, I mean, I mean, look at our levees, they're super steep, but, but it's so wet down in there, so I can't put my, the tractor we generally put on the levees, I can't put that in there, but.
So, it, is the wetland provision still in place that we can't?
Yep.
So, we have to somewhat keep it as it is?
Yep.
But we can fill in a little bit, is the, the understanding, basically?
Well, we're just gonna reshape it. We're just gonna, cause we gotta keep that flow line. Yep.
We actually, um, addressed it again throughout the Lafayette project. Hey, can we do anything with that area? And it was nay, because of the wetlands, it's.
For the sake of the audience, can you describe the area that we're talking about?
Uh, right across from the OP, that ditch.
That whole, that whole line?
Yep, that whole.
Clear down to, what minor is it?
It doesn't.
Well, it doesn't go quite to Saunders. It's like two houses before Saunders.
We're talking like a hundred yard tract?
It's a long ways, long ways. And then it goes all the way up to, uh, that business with all the wreck cars.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, that'll, it'll look nice and tie in nicely with the, with the Lafayette project too?
Yeah, I just wanna get it done before the curbing gutter gets in there, so.
It'd be disorienting without all those strings.
Well, some of the large ones are gonna stay. The really large ones are gonna stay. It's just those little ones that.
Yeah, no, we've talked about them for years.
Years, yep.
All under brush. Is this anything budgeted now, Chris, or?
Um, I, I don't think we really budgeted it.
Eh, unless we, if we utilize stormwater, which it is.
Yep, yep.
I mean, we could use some, uh, stormwater, uh, fees for this.
In this budget here?
Yeah. We just, for stormwater, we just do maintenance.
Yep.
And it's, I know, and, you know, it's open for whatever, you know, issues that we may have for stormwater.
Well, now's the time to do it.
Yeah.
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 Investing heavily on that road, and ain't worth going in and breaking it up later to fix it, and.
I'll take a motion to approve.
I make that motion? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thanks, Chris.
Yeah, thank you, Chris. Uh, fifteen requests to approve repairs on John Deere five forty-four K in the amount of nine thousand seven hundred forty-nine dollars and ninety-two cents with Murphy Tractor. Um, this was verbally approved in advance, um, just cause we had to get moving on it. It's our only, you know, heavy, heavy utility equipment, that's what I say. Um, it's used quite frequently in the city, and, um, I know we've spent a lot of money on it in the last, uh, couple of months, however, um, they're four hundred thousand new. So, we'll keep making some of these repairs, and, um, it's pretty much used, you know, every day of the week, so.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Um, I just, uh, we had all heard today, and I just, I don't, probably not all of us, but some of us had heard today that, um, Jeff, um, that was a council member, uh, with the city of Evansdale, he was also on the planning and zoning board, um, Jeff Bergman, um, he is, as of today, um, getting his new lungs.
Wow.
So. What's that? He's already done? Okay, good. So, just keep, um, him and his family in your thoughts and prayers, um, throughout this next week?
I, I had no idea that it was that bad.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, he's been really patient, cause I, this all kinda really started with him about, well, it was our seventy-fifth anniversary year.
Yeah, it was just as he came, kinda came on council, cause I mean, it, for, I don't know, not trying to be morbid, but kinda for discussion, we kinda watched the whole thing.
Yeah.
Transpire. Um, it just, he was here sitting one, and all of a sudden, the next day, it was a little short of breath, and then a couple of months later, something else, and then find out, and I remember all the testing and all the appointments, and he was waiting, and then all of a sudden, yeah, it was something to where just kinda even walking really, really left him short of breath. And glad they found out what it needed, but unfortunately, what it needed was, I mean, a lot, and a couple lungs is tough to come by.
Both?
Yeah.
Yep, yep. So, I, shameless plug for being a donor. I mean, that's where it came from. Um, somebody, uh, uh, somebody's lost and, and, you know.
Jeff gained.
Yes, you know, may they rest in peace and their family be with peace, but tha- that individual was able to help another life, so. But yeah, it was great news. I saw that just yesterday. Yep, it was just yesterday.
Council?
I would like to recognize the work that the public works has done over the winter, as time allowed. They've cleaned up the, uh, shoreline along, um, Ange- uh, Myers Lake there at Angels Park on the north side and the west side, and the neighbors are just ecstatic. They've asked for this for years, and it's finally come to pass. And also, they've worked, they've been working down on River Road between the overpass and the, um, bike trail where it crosses the river, taken out some big trees, cleaned out brush. It's not only made it easier for those people to mow in the summertime, you know, cutting down on the amount of time they have to spend doing that, but it looks, it looks wonderful.
Yeah, and enhances the view all the way around.
And it all started with Dick wanting a couple of trees taken out on the.
Well, that would've been a tough spot to get to, I would imagine.
We got him. He got him.
Great job.
Barry and, and Justin were down there, Jason were down there a, a big part of the time. That is nice, too.
Thank you for letting us know.
It makes a difference, doesn't it, John?
Yes, it does.
It really does. If you can, you, you're more inclined to pick things up if you can walk over to a can, and you don't have to truck it, you know, a mile back to your house. Nobody's gonna do that.
Yep, nobody likes holding the bag that long.
So, thank you very much, Chris.
Yes, thank you.
If it's okay, I would like to announce, um, the next fundraiser for the EEDC. Um, otherwise, if that's not allowed, I'll take my words back and you won't know about it, um, at this meeting. But coming up at the end of this month, um, the last Saturday, August, August. April twenty-sixth, we are having a chicken and noodle dinner. Uh, it's a Saturday night from five to seven. Since we don't have the community center yet, it's going to be held at Prince of Peace Lutheran Church on Lafayette.
I like that.
So, price is, somebody refresh my memory?
They did this last fall, and I, some of the best food I've ever had, really.
So, we encourage all of you to come and have a good meal.
That being said, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So, moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?